It's calling me in the order. Bryce for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as we're all.
He's called to order and it sounds like there might be a change to the agenda.
Yep, I'm going to request that the council amend the agenda to include item C under general business, which would be authorize the hire of a police officer to fill a vacancy based on a resignation.
I'm wondering if we should consider removing item A from general business. Moving that to a future meeting.
I think we could discuss the possibility of either opening up a hearing and continuing it since we posted it or just removing it altogether.
I'm referring to the general business.
The interim ordinance related to the sale, manufacturing, testing cannabinoids. So there's two different approaches, just speaking bluntly. If there is a desire to provide for input and participation from the two council members that are not here tonight, the council can certainly continue, can pull it from the agenda and it can be rescheduled for the November seventeenth meeting. Or if there's a desire to act on it or not act on it, the council can also approach it that way as well. My guess is that if it is put up for a vote and it fails for lack of a majority or lack of a second, there will be a request from, based on past discussions from the council members that aren't here tonight, to have it placed on the November seventeenth agenda.
So I'm going to suggest that we do that. We just remove it from tonight's meeting and move it to a future meeting.
Okay, staff will reschedule it.
Yeah, so then we'll go back to just two items on general business then.
Correct, so then it would be item A or then it would still be item B, establishment of the economic TIF district, and then C authorize the hire of the officer.
Okay, any other changes?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
Any motions to adopt the agenda?
I like it the way it was, but I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
He took the fun right out of him.
I know.
I'm just jumping ahead because it's just going to come back at a future meeting, so. Out of respect to Bryce. We have a presentation.
Thank you for the time, council. As you know, I am the president of the Southern Valley Alliance Board of Directors. Also, as you know, we are a nonprofit organization that provides services and support for victims of domestic violence serving all of Scott and Carver counties. I am honored to be with you to share more about SVA and inform you that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This is an important time to recognize victims, survivors, raise awareness about domestic abuse, and highlight the critical work Southern Valley Alliance is doing within our community. Did you know that one in three women and one in four men have experienced some form of abuse or domestic violence in their lifetime? We would like to think it doesn't happen in our community, but the truth is that domestic violence happens everywhere. Last year's annual report shows that we served nine hundred and fifty-four victims of domestic violence and we answered eighteen hundred crisis line calls. Since our organization was founded in nineteen eighty-two, we have assisted two hundred and fifty-six victim survivors just here in the city of Belkoma Market. We are working diligently to break the cycle of violence in our community by providing essential services like twenty-four-seven free and confidential crisis lines, crisis intervention and court advocacy, safe housing partnerships, support groups, and community engagement and education. As you heard from our founding time, 2022 is the fortieth anniversary of us as an organization. We've had the honor of serving more than twenty-three thousand individuals as they try to lead healthy, violence-free lives. What better way to celebrate than to announce our move to Shakopee? In 2023, our office location will move from Belle Plaine to Shakopee. The new location is close, very close in proximity to the public transportation, county services, the courthouse, employment opportunities, and many other community resources. Being centralized in the county, right between Carver and Scott County, right between the two courthouses, we will be able to serve many, oh, we will be able to open many doors for survivors in our community that we just can't now being way out in Belle Plaine. Help us continue to raise awareness and to make a difference by getting involved at www.svamn.org. Follow and share our posts on social media, participate in upcoming events, and domestic violence awareness campaigns. Through increasing awareness, training, and building relationships, we can empower victims, educate our youth, inform our neighbors, and partner with agencies invested in safety and well-being in our community. Again, thank you for having me and giving me the time tonight and for partnering with us, everything that you guys do. I wish Kate was here, just, she does so much through Firehouse and just started a campaign with them where you can donate extra, the extra change in the dollar, or you can make special donations right there at Firehouse Grill. The safety, just everybody's investing in the safety and well-being of our community. And again, our goal is ending the cycle of violence in Carver and Scott counties, and we literally couldn't do it without you, so. I'll ask, any questions about Southern Valley Alliance and the move? Just a little update, on the nineteenth, we bulldozed the building to make wait for the brand-new building to go up, waiting on permitting, and it's quite an ordeal, but we're still hoping late summer of 2023 to move in there. And it's going to be huge for us as an organization. Thank you for your time, Mayor and Council.
I have a question, if you don't mind. Do you know how big the new facility will be?
So, right now, the new facility is going to end up being about forty-five hundred square feet.
And will they have temporary beds in that facility or?
We will not house anybody there, but what it really does have, that our current facility is roughly the same size, but half of that isn't usable. And this new facility, right at the courthouse, will have community rooms, so we can have community meetings, community education. It'll house all the staff members. And I want to say, at that center, Shakopee, Prior Lake, and Savage, make up seventy percent of the domestic violence in our county. And then there's more, obviously, in Carver County as well. But being that close to the victims, we're going to be able to help so many more people because our advocates can walk right across the street and get order for protections and domestic abuse, no-contact orders, walk right across the street. It's prob, part of the problem we have is we can't get volunteers and can't get people to Belle Plaine because it's so far away. So being close to the service right there, public transportation, housing, is going to be phenomenal. But what we are going to be able to increase is being there, we're going to, we increase our voucher program so we can help more victims of domestic violence leave and then have protective places to stay, but it won't be housed there. Just our headquarters.
Has the existing facility been sold or found a reuse?
Yes, so right now, we're renting back. A church bought our existing building in Belle Plaine, and then we're renting back, and they've been very generous at letting us be there, rent back until our facility's up and running.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, we'll open up the public comment. Anyone interested in speaking on the public comment? One, once, twice? The comments closed, on the consent agenda. Anyone have items they would like hold or any quick questions or live entertaining motions?
Motion to approve consent.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Josh, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, consent passes. We have a public hearing tonight. On the business subsidy policy amendment. Do I need a motion to open the public hearing or do I just open it?
Well, given that this is, I would suggest giving the presentation, although the council's part of the EDA has already heard it, this will actually be recorded and available to the public, so staff would recommend that we have Renee give the brief presentation again on the purpose.
Sure.
And at that point, I would open the public hearing, and then if the council chooses to continue the public hearing, they can continue it until the November seventeenth meeting, or you could choose to reschedule the hearing to the November seventeenth meeting. So actually, Mayor, you could go either way.
I would opt to reschedule the public hearing to the next meeting. Does anyone object to that?
So we could just continue the item to the, or continue, move the, reschedule the item for the next meeting?
Okay, do you need a motion for that?
Motion would be great.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing or to move the public hearing to the next council meeting.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Would it be the council's preference then to hold with the presentation until that meeting?
Yes. On to general business, we have. Two items, first is establish an economic development tax increment financing district.
Staff would like to introduce a discussion regarding the possible establishment of a tax increment financing district that would cover the proposed Park I-35 industrial park. So as the council is aware, the city has been planning for the development of Park I-35 for at least a decade, and city staff have been discussing and exploring the idea of establishing a TIF district covering the entire industrial park with the idea being that TIF revenue could be utilized by the city to offset any potential city costs related to development of the park. The property has recently been annexed into the city in two thousand and one, twenty-one and twenty-two. Development applications have now been received, and the TIF district would ideally be established prior to issuance of any building permits within the industrial park. In order to capture any TIF revenue, the district does have to be established before building permits are issued. So I just want to note a few key items. The developer of the industrial park, which is Ryan Companies U.S., has not applied for tax increment financing and are not requesting business subsidy. The proposed manufacturing company, Niagara Bottling, has also not applied for tax increment financing. The TIF district would be established, or the idea being suggested by staff is that it would be established for the benefit of the city, and revenue generated from the TIF district could be used by the city to offset city expenses in the TIF district or an identified project area. Just going to do a brief one-on-one on what is tax increment financing. It's a tool established by Minnesota statute that is the ability to capture and use most of the increase in local property tax revenues from new developments within a defined geographic area for a defined period of time without the approval of other taxing districts. It would involve the revenue generated from the city portion, the county portion, and school district portion of the taxes for use by the city. The basis is that the current value of the property, which ultimately equates into property taxes. Out there today, the, those revenues would continue to be, the original revenues would continue to go to the original taxing jurisdictions. It's just the increased revenue, which would equate to increased property taxes or the increment could be retained by the city for a period of time. This would be proposed as an economic development TIF district. There are various types of districts outlined in state statute. Tax increment revenues, again, could be spent outside of the TIF district, but within the boundaries of the project, unidentified project areas, subject to certain restrictions. At least eighty-five percent of the TIF revenues have to be spent within the district, and up to fifteen percent of the revenue could be spent outside of the district in a identified project area, which could be the entire city if we so choose. There's a maximum of a nine-year term under this type of TIF district. The district could be decertified at any time the council would so choose. If there was remaining money or fund balance after the council chose to decertify, those funds would be returned to the taxing authorities. So potential uses of TIF revenue that we think could benefit the city are any potential cost participation in transportation system improvements, either on CASA II or at or near the interchange area. Things that have been discussed as potential improvements would include temporary turn lane improvements at the interchange ramps, which would improve the function until such time the interchange is replaced. Potentially, temporary signalization at the interchange ramps, and potential improvements at the entrance to Park I-35, although none are currently identified prior to the reconstruction of the interchange. Also, infrastructure oversizing or system costs within Park I-35. There are some water and sanitary sewer oversizing costs that we anticipate, and infrastructure costs that would be our responsibility. So again, this map depicts the boundary currently of a potential TIF district for the industrial park. A potential project area could include the entire city or a smaller area. So at this point, we're really just trying to introduce the topic to see if the council generally supports the establishment of a Park I-35 TIF district, and if so, what percentage of revenues might, you might feel are appropriate. And the term of the increment, if you set it for the full nine years, the first step would be to, if you are in support of this, we would propose that at the next council meeting, we replace this on the agenda where you would direct us to prepare for a public hearing. You would adopt a resolution ordering a public hearing. Included in your packet, in your memo, these are some high-level, we don't know what, you know, for phase one, the first proposed development, which would be the Niagara facility. We don't know what the tax increment would be yet. But this was just to give you some idea. We're working with the county assessor's office right now. We believe we'll have some more detailed information early next week on what, on some potential assessed values or estimated market values for the improved project, so we can give you a better idea of potential revenues. But these are just some high-level revenues, you can see pretty significant numbers. That is all that I have, if Tom has anything that he'd like to add.
So tonight, we're not asking you to approve a TIF district. We're not looking for final decisions on the percentage of TIF to capture or the term of the TIF district or any of those items. We're simply asking the council to basically authorize us to start down a path. I would suggest, or to the council, that a discussion about if we move down that path, how much we should capture, really would be easier at a future meeting after we know what the valuation would be and the amount that would potentially be captured, could be captured off of it. I can tell you that we've had discussions internally as staff, and depending on the increment amount, we would be suggesting that we may not capture the entire increment so that there would be a growth in the tax base because we still have needs for operational and debt service requirements within the city and our budget. The trade-off is that, is you're not capturing as much and as many dollars, and you aren't able, and when you're not capturing, oh, you're also not capturing the school district and the county dollars. But there's also an argument out there that maybe you want some of the new tax base growth to go to the county and to the, to the school district. So that's a discussion maybe for the next meeting. I think what we're really looking for is a discussion related to the merits of the concept that staff is presenting tonight, and then direction from the council on whether or not we should start taking steps in that direction, knowing that decisions will be made at future meetings.
One question to get back to something you had said earlier in your presentation. You had mentioned the costs that the city would be responsible for. Now, there's the adage that development should pay for itself. I mean, what are the, what are the costs that, in a development, that the city would be paid?
Well, as an example, we are asking the developer to oversize the water trunk lines that would go through the development so that they can serve a larger area outside of their development, and that's common in any, any development. If we, if they need to be larger to serve areas beyond the perimeter of that development, then those are costs that are borne by the city.
Okay.
So the oversizing of water lines is a very likely scenario, and then there are sewer force mains that we, that are system costs that the city would typically pay for. We're asking the developer, or we'll reimburse the developer for the.
It made more sense to have those lines go in with their developments that we didn't interrupt the site before it was needed, but we do need to pay our share of that network.
Typically, that would, would not, paying for all of that oversizing would not be something we would expect a developer to do. Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, because they, technically, they're going to build, they pay for their infrastructure that they would have to do that supports their development, so they're still paying their share.
Yep, yep.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions or?
I have lots of questions, and I feel smart about a lot of things, and this is one thing I definitely feel really stupid about. Like, just understanding the purpose of this, like, I feel somewhat uneasy about even going down this path because, I mean, we expect, you know, developers in the future to, you know, kind of show the butt-for test for these, for asking for TIF, and I don't feel like we're even establishing, like, it feels weird doing it now when nobody's asking for it, and, and I get we'd want to set it up prior to anybody asking for it, but it's still, I don't know, I don't know enough about it to speak very well on it yet. So for future things, provide a lot of information because I just feel really dumb in this area, and it feels, I don't know. Something just tells me not, I don't know.
Do you have a question or?
No, it's more of a comment of just how dumb I am, basically. I just don't get.
That's unrecorded.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. But what are some of the pros and cons of, you know, TIF district versus not? I mean, for those of us that don't know the ins and the outs.
That's, that's, that's a really good question. So it goes back to the slide that had the picture of the state Capitol in the background, that it allows us to collect tax dollars to reimburse us for eligible, property tax dollars or reimburse for eligible expenses. Without, if we were not utilizing TIF, one, we would not be able to capture dollars that would be going to the county or to the school district. So it allows us to capture more dollars than we would just get off if we got our thirty to forty percent of the tax value off.
AKA steal is not the right word. Borrow or transfer those funds to the city, take it away from what the county and our school districts would get without it?
Yep, but with the concept of TIF is that if we weren't making these investments, the development wouldn't have occurred in the first place, and they wouldn't have it anyways. That's kind of the butt-for, that's the logic behind TIF districts. The other advantage is that we can use those tax, those property tax dollars in ways that we normally wouldn't be. We just can't, we can't levy to fund the utility funds. We could do transfers, it's frowned upon, and it would look bad within the city that we have to support the utility funds. Under this way, it's a very clean, acceptable, and way in which we could use property tax dollars to fund utility infrastructure. It's a common use of tax increment dollars, so it's an efficient way in which to, which to do it. One of the things, so the two big things are, A, you get to more dollars than you normally would, and two, you get to use the dollars in ways that you normally would not be able to. The other thing to keep in mind is that even at that, there's time, there's limitations on how much, how you can spend it, where you can spend it, and the amount of time you can collect the increment. So it's not a forever thing. And then again, staff is, as we get into the analysis and we know how much increment we're going to be able to collect, staff will be, we're inclined to, we're inclined to believe that in this particular circumstance, we may not want to collect the entire amount of increment that's available. So there would still, in that scenario, there would still be an increase in tax dollars that would be available to the county and to the school district, even during the term of the TIF district.
So that sounded like very much a for argument that cities would make. What are the cons or what, what is the other stakeholders? What are they going to say against it?
Typically, the concern with counties and school districts is, well, it did get built, and we should be collecting those dollars. And that really is a philosophical position related to counties and school districts. In my experience, in the metro area where TIF is used on a regular basis, those organizations understand the use of TIF, the nature of it. They accept that it will happen because at the end of the day, they don't, it allows us to do it without, without their consent, but they understand that it will happen. In the case of the school district, they would like that, they'd always like more revenue, but this isn't a student-generating project, it's not creating additional burden on them. For the county, might it necessitate some improvements on the county system? Yes, but our own modeling has shown that those improvements are needed with or without this project. So I think those arguments would be a little weak. At the end of the day, in my experience, the school district would not necessarily, wouldn't, would unlikely be to be opposed to it, as would the county. We would certainly contact them as part of the process. They're contacted to provide comment, but in my experience within the county, the county board has not been against the use of TIF, especially given the nature of this project as an economic development project. They take the longer-term view related to it, and I expect that the school district would as well.
Another item to note is that of the three things that we may need to fund related to development in this area, water and sewer, we do have infrastructure funds for transportation improvements that would be completely general levy without the use of TIF if the county asked us to be a partner in any improvements. We don't have a revenue source for that other than general levy.
So that gets back to the ability to capture the dollars. If we were to hypothetically say, okay, well, we don't use TIF, so, but we're going to see some tax base growth that could help fund that, but we aren't capturing the school district or the county dollars in that, so it would increase proportionally the burden potentially on our local taxpayers, where this would allow us to capture from this specific project those additional dollars and reduce the burden on the local taxpayer.
Do we have to have the specific infrastructure needs or costs or expenses when we approve, or we capture this money regardless then of whether? And that's where I guess I would argue if I'm on the other side of, you're capturing stuff with no need, and then you bring up the transportation. I mean, that makes sense, I mean, so we're going to have to do that and some of the, the infrastructure stuff we're going to have to do. But when we don't have to do it, that's where it feels.
So we, we have eligible, we have potentially eligible expenses today in the oversizing of the infrastructure within the industrial park, which hasn't started construction, we're still eligible to collect increment for those, the force main. We have estimates at this point as to what those would be with regards to potential improvements at the interchange. We're collecting dollars related to a potential project. It's not our, it's not our project, but it would allow us to participate or through our participation, incent the county and state to actually make that investment. So those have not specifically been identified, but we've been having discussions with the county for eight-plus years about that, those potential projects and the need for them, so it's not a new topic.
And to your point, Josh, we don't know all of the projects and all of the amounts of the potential projects, and if it's determined that we don't need the TIF anymore, the proceeds from. TIF anymore, the, uh, proceeds from the TIF get returned to the county, they redistribute them to the school district, the county and the city, uh, as, um.
Any other questions? I, I, you know, I support it from just a budget flexibility tool, to be honest. It's, I, it, I, I don't love the idea of implementing TIF at, like, it feels early to do it, um, to establish a TIF district, but make a good case, I don't think we're necessarily losing anything by doing it now. And I just, I like the forward thinking of budgeting or, yeah, I guess budgeting some funds, or finding a way to capture some funds, so we can cover some of the cost, and we don't have to shift, shift it necessarily to all the taxpayers in general. And there's, I mean, there's really more money than we're capturing by doing this, by getting the school and county funds. That'd be my two cents. I don't know that we have the information to really give much feedback on the length of time, or, you know, the percentage that we capture, but if I heard, uh, you write, that would be coming up the next meeting. Is everyone opposed to pursuing this?
I'm not opposed. I think nine years is a long time. It shouldn't be for nine, but that's just my.
As a council, are we comfortable giving staff the green light to move forward with us?
I am.
Yeah, I mean, I got a lot more to learn, so I'll read up on, for the next one, but.
So there is another element to this particular, um, discussion, and it gets into, if you remember from Renee's presentation, establishing the boundaries of your TIF district and your project area. So I'm just gonna share my screen really quick. So we've had ongoing discussions with our bond legal counsel, uh, who, um, is our experience in the area of TIF increment and the use of increment, um, those legal specialists, and that's at Dorsey Whitney, who we use for, utilize for these types of items, and with Ellers and Associates. And what they've identified, and one of the issues that we have is if we want to preserve the potential to utilize the increment on interchange improvements, it has to be within the city limits, 'cause we can't spend increment outside, that we've captured for our jurisdiction, outside of our jurisdiction. So the simple solution to that is that you would annex the interchange, basically the ramps, the entrance and intersections, the bridge itself. So we can do that, it's fairly straightforward, but it would require, um, there, there's consequences, and it would require a couple of things. One, I think we would, should approach, if we want to pursue that, we should approach the township about doing an orderly annexation through our normal process. I believe that there are two reasons why the township would be very agreeable to it. One is if it provides a potential funding source to create improvements to the interchange, that's to the benefit of their residents just as much as it is ours. Two, um, when we annex it, that would become within the city limits. So any incidents that occur that require response from the fire department, it would move into our numbers for purposes of the fire, um, fire expense allocation formula. And if you think about it, it's an interchange, there are incidents that occur throughout the year, you've all driven by them, because there's intersections and it's the, and it's the interchange. So I think because of that, because it would take burden off of them, I think they would be happy. In fact, that might even be the bigger reason than the improvements to the interchange, based on my experiences with, discussing with the board in the past. That would mean, however, that we would take on the burden of those incidents. The fire departments are responding now, so it wouldn't be an extra response burden, but we would absorb some cost. From a police department standpoint, we would now be responsible. Now, the reality is if there's a crash of any size, at, we're going out there, but we're going out to provide neutralize, so we're going out there for a period of time, but it helped, you know, flashing lights, help direct traffic, that kinda stuff, but at some point, we get to leave, and the county gets to deal with the reports and all the aftermath. Those would become our burden. In speaking with the chief, the chief's indicated, yes, it would be, provide additional workload, it would be additional burden, it's not side, outside the capacity of the department, but the council just needs to recognize it would increase, incrementally, the workload within, um, within the department, because now we would have greater burden related to those incidences. However, in discussions with the chief, he pointed out that if we actually do get those interim improvements at the interchange, those number of incidences are likely to decrease. A classic example would be when we put in the temporary lights during the roundabout project, um, the number of incidences at the interchange dropped dramatically during that period. So there might be a little bit of pain in the near term to potentially, um, solve it in the longer term. So we wanted to present, we wanted to put that out there for the council for a little bit of feedback, because if we're not looking at doing that, then it limits the eligible projects that we could use the increment for, to stuff that's really, it, within the interior of the development. There's still that fifteen percent that you can use outside of the district, the pooling dollars, but at fifteen percent, they're not substantial.
When we talked about this earlier, you had mentioned, um, uh, safety controls at the intersection.
Correct. So council recall, when we've talked about, um, reconstructing the interchange, which at the earliest, I think, a reasonable expectation could be like eight, eight years, just based on funding availability at the county to participate, the length of time it takes to put these things together. And so, uh, there's been discussion related to interim improvements. They've been everything from installing roundabouts to temporary lights, and I think based on recent discussions we've had at the county MINDOT, the most likely option is putting in temporary signal lights, plus.
Some short turn lanes.
Um, the, the most current analysis shows the, the best solution to improve, um, circulation is actually turn lanes without lights.
With, with turn lanes, or either, either way, you're looking at, um, some interim improvements at, at the intersection.
But it gives us more control.
It does.
And that's, that was the point I wanted to get across. So is this just for information, or are you trying to get a feel for whether we would like to pursue that?
Well, we, we can move forward with establishing the district, um, because there's a possibility that, and we can always amend the district boundaries once it's been established, following the annexation. So we'd recommend moving forward regardless, um, the council, and if, I would say, once you've decided you are actually going to establish a district, then you would direct us to move forward with the annexation, if you wanted to, um, be able to use dollars on interchange improvement.
The annexation piece is just for information at this point?
At this point, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or thoughts? I think we're still all comfortable moving forward. Okay, uh, next un, item under general business, authorize the higher of a police officer, and give Tom all the authority in the world.
So as the chief. Chief reporting the work session, under police department reports, uh, one of our patrol officers has resigned to take a position in another city, so I'm asking for authorization from the council to post, to fill the vacancy. In addition to that, I'm asking for authorization to exceed our starting salary range as identified by policy, so that we can be more attractive and competitive for lateral, um, transfers, um, employees who are well-experienced officers coming from other agencies. The hiring, as I explained earlier, the hiring environment is such that usually it's a timing issue, and we've had this experience when we've been hiring officers, where good officers are in the process in multiple agencies, and there's a little bit of first-come, first-served. And under the current policy, um, I am authorized to offer, based on experience, step one through step three, we have an eight-step scale. If you're bringing in an officer hypothetically who has ten, twelve, fifteen years of experience, and based on their pay, and based on their experience, I can come back, normally, I would come back to the council and say, hey, we might wanna hire them above step three. However, um, that could be up to two weeks before I would be getting that feedback from the council, and we may lose our opportunity. So I'd be asking the council for this position, authorize me to exceed the policy range for starting salary, um, based on experience and qualifications for this hire.
We have no resolution in front of us, so there, so you're just looking for direction?
It would just be a motion.
I have a question about sort of like pay equity. You have current officers who are hired on steps one through three, are they, do you have any concerns with that and what they?
The concerns? There's not as much concerns as there are with bonuses. You know, hiring, the new person comes in, they're getting five grand or ten grand to come work for us, when I didn't get that. All of our officers acknowledge that if an officer's gonna come in with significantly more experience than them, they understand economically, they might make more than them.
Okay.
It's not here, the experience in our community, but they recognize that this is a Northfield officer, that was a K nine, an officer of the year, and ten years on, wants to move in, that they're gonna make more than them. That is a totally different system, or a totally different mindset. They know that they've put in their time, so it's different than getting a ten thousand dollar bonus to come here. That's what has really been dividing departments, is that bonus.
Any other questions? Any concerns?
No.
Okay. So I'm not exactly sure what we're motioning.
So I would be looking for a motion to authorize city administrator to hire a police department, or police officer to fill the vacant, pending vacant position, and furthermore authorize a city administrator to, um, hire outside the policy dictated starting salary range, based on experience and qualifications.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Amanda, second by Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, uh, on to discussion by council.
Motion, do we change?
Second.
Josh, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.